There she goes.
There you go.
Good.
All right.
All set?
Yeah.
I got hit more than that.
Yeah, that was a little weak.
Sorry. Meeting in the South Hunterdon Regional Board of Education is called to order. Adequate notice as required by the Open Public Meetings Act was provided on December 30th, 2021 by posting the notice with the respective clerks of the city of Lambertville, Borough of Stockton, and Township of West Amwell, and advertised on December 16th, 2021, and the Hunterdon County Democrat and Trenton Times Newspaper. Please stand for the black seat.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to republic which stands alone nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Tony, I give it to you.
Yep. So hello, everyone, and happy new year. We're going to kind of skip a little bit on our agenda. We're going to really skip down to 2A, and we are fortunate this evening to have Glenn Thornton with us from New Jersey School Boards, and Glenn's going to come up to the podium and provide an annual ethics training for our boards, since we do have some new folks joining our board this evening. So I'm going to pull up her presentation and then turn it over to Glenn.
Thank you very much. Good evening, happy new year to all of you. It is nice to see some familiar faces as well as some new faces. So for those of you who are just new to board service, congratulations. I hope you find it as exciting and interesting and challenging as I know I always did. I am a field service representative with New Jersey School Boards Association, and we provide direct services to our boards. I spent 10 years on a board of education in Somerset County, and so I have sat where you're sitting. I do remember being a brand-new board member and being a little overwhelmed, but you will get past that, trust me. It doesn't last forever, and we're here to help you in whatever way we can. So tonight, I am here to talk about ethics. As part of New Jersey Quality Single Accountability Continuum, you are required by law to have an annual ethics training to receive and acknowledge a copy of the Code of Ethics, and that acknowledgement form that you will fill out and sign, you give to your business administrator, who files it with the county office, so your executive county superintendent is aware that you have completed that requirement. So the School Ethics Act was put into effect in April 1992 as part of statute. Originally, the original Code of Ethics, and it's identical to what you're going to see tonight, was created by our delegate assembly. The delegate assembly is made up of the 560 school districts across the state. It meets twice a year, and the Code of Ethics came out of the work of the delegate assembly, boards of education all across the state. Originally, it was voluntary, and then the legislature enacted it and made it part of statute. So it really speaks to the boards of education's need to hold the respect and confidence of the population and the community that you serve, as well as making sure that you avoid conduct that could be a potential violation of the public trust or create a justifiable impression or perception that the public, to the public, that their trust had been violated. So it is something that is really, I think, very important for all of you to know. You are the largest group of unpaid elected officials across the state of New Jersey who originally voluntarily agreed to live by the Code of Ethics, and now, as elected officials, you have to abide by the Code of Ethics. I keep waiting for our legislative brethren under the golden dome down the street from our offices in Trenton to agree to a Code of Ethics, but after 18 years of doing this work, I'm not holding my breath any longer. So it really is to ensure that the public has confidence, that you are adhering to specific standards that guide your conduct, and this act also applies not only to school districts of your type, but also to charter schools as well. And so that's an important piece. Again, it's part of CUSAC, and it's part of the requirement under the Governance Indicator. CUSAC looks at your district in five different areas. It is the state's monitoring system, and all school districts within the state, with the exception of charters, are CUSACed. We take an acronym and turn it into a verb, are CUSACed every three years, and so it's important that you do this on an annual basis. So the School Ethics Act outlines how it gets implemented. It created a School Ethics Commission. It outlines potential conflicts of interest that you must avoid. It also includes now the mandatory requirements for training for board of education members, as well as filling out disclosure statements that are personal regarding your financial pieces. You will receive that electronically from the School Ethics Commission in your email. Board of education members are required to fill out your financial disclosure forms on an annual basis. You fill it out, you sign it, and return it via electronic means. When I was a board member, we had to fill it out in duplicate, sign both original copies, and then send it off. That's how long ago I was a board member, but it's much easier now that it's electronic for you to take care of. But that is a requirement that you complete that as well. In terms of mandatory training, you are the most educated school board members in the country. I will tell you that. In the first year of your board term, you're required to attend new board member orientation. You can do that three different ways. Maybe this year, only two different ways. Used to be three different ways. In person, we offer two weekend new board member orientation weekends, which are a wonderful experience for new board members. You can do it online electronically from the comfort of your home in bunny slippers and pajamas, if you'd like, or you can attend a remote hybrid meeting at the county level as well. In years two and three, you're required to take GOV2 in year two, and GOV3 in year three. GOV2 is school finance and labor relations. GOV3 is around curriculum and instruction, student achievement. And then GOV4, if you decide that you love the work that you're doing, and some of you have, and have been re-elected, you have to go to GOV4 in the first year of any terms subsequent to your first, and it generally includes legal updates, things that may have changed over the course of the time that you have served on the board. The School Ethics Commission is composed of nine people appointed by the governor for three-year terms, five non-school officials, citizens, two school board members, and two school administrators. You can only have five from one political party, which speaks to the nonpartisan nature of school board membership, so that it is not a political body whatsoever. Unfortunately, the last two governors have not been very good about appointing members, and there are currently only six members serving on the School Ethics Commission. We are waiting for the governor to appoint three new folks to the commission, but he doesn't seem to have been in much of a hurry. So just so you know that that's how it's currently constituted, okay? The School Ethics Commission's jurisdiction, they can issue two different kinds of pieces. One is an advisory opinion. If, as a board member, you think that you're going to be asked to vote on something that might potentially provide a conflict of interest, or you have a concern about your ability to participate for a particular reason, you can write to the Ethics Commission requesting an advisory opinion. They will get back to you with an explanation as to whether it is or is not a conflict, and whether you can or cannot participate. Sometimes advisory opinions have such widespread application that they make those advisory opinions public. They remove all of the names of people involved and the district, and just issue it as a public advisory. Board members are expected to know those, about those public advisories, and to abide by whatever guidelines are set forth in those public advisories. We always publish in School Board Notes, which is a weekly update that you can get electronically or in hard copy, the latest school board advisory opinions, so that you are always made aware of them, but there is an expectation that board members will be aware of those decisions. They also will adjudicate ethics complaints. If a member of the public, or another citizen, or another board member files an ethics complaint against you as a board member, they will adjudicate that particular case based on the information contained. They meet once a month. They've been doing it remotely, of course, through the pandemic, and they've been a little slow to get their decisions out by virtue of that, but they do meet monthly, and they do adjudicate any complaint that is filed against a board of education member. And we'll talk a little bit about that. They are empowered by virtue of statute to issue the following kinds of penalties for ethics violations. They can recommend a reprimand, which comes as a rebuke by the commissioner. You're reprimanded for whatever it is you have done. A censure, which is a little stronger than a reprimand. It's formal disapproval. It is publicized, meaning it has to be read by the, at the board table in a public meeting, and it has to be posted within the district for 30 days. You can be suspended as a board member for a specific period of time, as decided by the commissioner, who issues a formal resolution, and they do have the power to remove a school board member for a particularly egregious offense against the Code of Ethics. And they have used all of those across time with various board members, depending upon the various ethics complaints that have been filed. They make a recommendation to the commissioner, who makes a final decision, and if you choose to appeal it, it is heard in the appellate division of the New Jersey court system. So there are appeals to the SEC's decisions if you chose to go down that road. Okay? This past year, there were no advisory opinions that were made public whatsoever, so it was a quiet year. In terms of mandatory training violations, their website indicates they did not remove any members, but we are aware that there were several charter school members who were removed, but their website hasn't been updated since August, so that number may not be completely accurate, but it is the number that is currently public and on the website. They suspended 12 members for 30 days each for failing to complete their mandatory training within the year that you're given. So if you're sworn in tonight as a brand-new board member, you have until the end of December of 2022 to do your new board member orientation training. I would, of course, urge you strongly not to wait a full year, because as a brand-new board member, it's very helpful to have that information as soon as possible, and you would really greatly benefit from it, but I, you just need to be clear what those timelines look like. So for all of the trainings, if you're a second-year member, you have the same amount of time you have this year, from now, tonight, until the end of December 2022, to take your mandatory training. In terms of violations, there were 23 complaints filed, formal complaints filed against board members. Seventeen were dismissed outright as not having factual basis or being violations in and of themselves, and six cases were recommended to the commissioner, and I will talk about those a little later in this presentation. It probably would not surprise you to know that most of them had to do with social media, which seems to be a problem. There was only one advisory opinion in 2020, and again, I'm pointing it out to you because, again, it was made because it has widespread application. A superintendent's sister-in-law was a lunch aid in the district before this person became superintendent in the district, and then was selected by the principals to be a finalist for the secretarial position. So because the superintendent felt it might be a potential conflict of interest, he sought an advisory opinion, and the SEC advised that if the superintendent recommended his sister-in-law for a promotion, that would violate the nepotism part of 18A, the nepotism law, and the public could reasonably perceive this action provided an unwarranted benefit for the superintendent's family member. Because there's two parts to the Code of Ethics. There's the part of the Code of Ethics that refers to behavior, and then there's a part that refers to conflicts of interest, and they are both something that you need to be aware of. So they indicated that the superintendent must recuse himself from any discussion on his sister-in-law's employment as a lunch aid moving forward. Not only could he not promote her and recommend her for promotion, he could not be involved with anything having to do with the terms and conditions of her employment as a family member. Okay? So there is a nepotism law that is on the books that applies to your school district that says the superintendent may not recommend any family member of a board of education member to be employed within your school district. So because the person was here in the district, whatever district this was, prior to the superintendent coming to that district, the family member was grandfathered. That was not a problem, but he could not participate in anything having to do with her ongoing employment, including promotion. Okay? Because that is so widespread for boards of education to be aware of that, they made it a public advisory. Okay? So here is the Code of Ethics itself. You're required to uphold and enforce all laws, rules, regulations of the state board, court orders pertaining to the districts, and change can only be brought through legal and ethical procedures. I want to just take a moment and point this out to you. This has been, in this past pandemic 20-plus months, occasionally a very divisive period for a lot of communities and board of educations. You are responsible, as publicly elected officials, for upholding all laws, not just the ones you like, not just the executive orders you think are correct, but for all of the laws. So even if you didn't approve or agree with a particular executive order around, for example, masking, right, or having to be remote, those are decisions that you have nothing that you can do about, right? You can write to the governor and say, "We don't like it." You can lobby. You are legislators, or you're senators down the street in Trenton, but you have to uphold the laws. And I point that out because oftentimes, especially for new folks, may not be aware that you just can't pick and choose those particular pieces that you happen to agree with. Several years back, when we went to the Common Core standards away from the New Jersey Learning Standards that we're now back to, there were lots of people who were concerned about the park assessments, and there were boards who wanted to not administer the park assessments, and we had to say to them, "We understand, but if the Department of Education says you have to take these assessments in your district, then you're required by law to do that." So those are something that is really important for you to recognize. Once you are sworn in, you become a public official, and your role is different than when you were sitting in the audience, or for me. Although I'm a public school official, I fill out the financial disclosure forms that I have to sign the Code of Ethics as an NJSBA professional staff member, but if I were just a citizen in one of your communities, I wouldn't have any more authority than anybody else. Okay? You have to make your decisions in terms of the educational welfare of all children, and seek to develop and maintain public schools that meet the needs of all children, regardless of their race, creed, sex, social standing. So as you're at the board table and you're making decisions, sometimes that can be difficult because you may be asked to make a decision that you might perceive as not in the best interest of your individual child, if you have one in the district. But you have to make your decisions in terms of what's good for all of the students. Okay? You're required to confine your board action to policymaking, planning, and appraisal. You really are a policymaking body, and so you're going to help frame policies and plans after the board has consulted those who would be affected by them. You're not here to run the schools. You have an administrative team of professionals whose job it is to do the day-to-day operations of the district. You are here to create policy, to provide oversight, to moderate implementation of those policies, and to ensure accountability to the public through communications. But you are not here to tell, you know, teachers how to teach. You sit on your board as a layperson, regardless of your professional career. I was a teacher by trade 100 years ago. I sat on my board as a parent, not as a teacher. And while I was sure, when I became a board member at first, that I could tell people how to teach more effectively, ha-ha, perhaps than they were doing it, that was not my role as a board of education member. So you need to remember that. If you're an accountant, you're not here to audit the district's books. If you're an attorney, you're not here to be the board's attorney. You are here as a citizen to be a member of the board. And so you want to make sure that you understand what your role is in terms of policymaking, oversight, communications, and accountability to the community. Okay? You will see that you carry out your responsibility, and here it is, not to administer those schools, but together with your colleagues to see that they are well-run. Okay? So you don't want to have involvement in the day-to-day activities of the school district. That's for your administration and the staff of your buildings to do that. Recognizing that authority rests with the board of education, and make no personal promises nor take any private actions that may compromise the board. Oftentimes, members of the public may believe that you have the ability to solve a problem for them. That's not your role. Your role is, as a full board, is to determine, you know, your vision for the district, goals to move the district forward, and then provide the financial resources and wherewithal through the budgeting and oversight around the budget to move the district closer to that vision that you have for the district. But it is not the ability to solve problems. What you can do that is the greatest help to your public is to provide parents and community members with information about how to get their problem solved, to direct them appropriately to the correct staff member, so that if a parent comes to you with an issue or concern, you can direct them. Have you spoken to the teacher? If you're not satisfied with the teacher's response, you would then talk to the principal. And if you're still not satisfied, then you might contact the assistant superintendent or supervisor of a particular curriculum area, if you have them, or an assistant superintendent, and then it would go to the superintendent. You are the court of last resort, so you want to make sure that people know who to contact. If they have an issue regarding busing, call the transportation office. Here's who you can contact and call. If you're not satisfied with that, in that particular case, you would then probably call the business administrator, who typically is responsible for transportation. So you can give people information as to how to solve their problems, but you can't solve their problems for them. You can help them understand how it works and make sure they knew, know who is appropriate to call and reach out to. You absolutely have to refuse to surrender your judgment to special interests or partisan political groups, or to use the schools for personal gain or the gain of friends. It's not unusual sometimes for board of education members to have people in the community say, "My daughter's just graduating from TCNJ, and she's a great teacher. What can you do to get her a job in the district?" What you can do is say, "Here's the person in charge of personnel. I suggest your daughter reach out and contact that individual." Again, access, but you can't bring the resume to the superintendent and hand it to them and say, "Here, interview this person." Okay? Even though you think you're helping a friend, you would be using it for the gain of someone else. Okay? Boards of education are nonpartisan, and so involving yourself with politics with a big D or a big R is probably not a great idea. I will tell you, Tennessee just passed a law making school board elections partisan, which I think is a huge mistake, because you're here for the kids. When you think about the school district, parents have a way to be heard at the board table by commenting, at the voting box, ballot box. Teachers have an association that provides them with the process and their contract for having agreements solved. Administrators have that typically as well in most districts. The only people that don't have a voice are the students, right? You're here to represent the best interests of every child in the district, and so you want to make sure that that is the focus of your decision-making, and that is the focus of the work that you do on a board. Okay? You're required to hold confidential all matters pertaining to the schools that if disclosed could possibly injure individuals or the district. There are certain items that will always remain confidential, student matters, personnel matters. There is a process whereby other matters that may need to be confidential initially ultimately will become public once the need for confidentiality no longer exists. So there are some things that you will never be able to talk about, which can be very frustrating to your public, which I understand, but it has to do with protecting those rights of both students and staff to confidential confidentiality. Okay? And again, you know, your responsibility is to provide accurate information in every area that you can, so that your community has the information that it needs and can have. It's just those few areas that are exceptions to the open public meeting law that you can't disclose to the public. And when the need for confidentiality has passed, then it, and of course, can become public. You're required to vote for the best qualified personnel available after consideration of the recommendation of your superintendent, your chief administrative officer. Boards of education cannot hire anyone without an affirmative recommendation of the superintendent. So even if the board thinks they have the best candidate for, you know, I don't know, a gym teacher or an English teacher, it doesn't matter, because without the recommendation of the superintendent, you can't hire him or her, and in fact, that is the most important role of the superintendent, is to ensure that you have the highest-quality staff in place, and they are much better qualified to be making those recommendations than board members. On the other hand, you're not required to vote yes on every personnel recommendation. If you have a particular issue, as long as your reasoning and rationale is not arbitrary or capricious, you can indeed vote no. So I don't want you to think you have no role in this, but it's very limited, particularly in the area of personnel. You are required to support and protect school personnel in the proper performance of their duties. That means you can't go on the sidelines of the soccer game and complain about the coach, even if you believe he hasn't put your, you know, next pally, student star, son, daughter in for enough time. If, again, if you have an issue, that's something that can be addressed appropriately up the chain of command, but you cannot be complaining about them on the sidelines any longer. You could yesterday, but as of today, you're done, as long as you're a board of education member. You have to protect school personnel and the proper performance of their duties. You also are responsible for referring all complaints to your superintendent, and as a board, will act on complaints at a public meeting only after the failure of an administrative solution. So if you, as a board member, hear something out in your community that there's an issue or a concern or a difficulty, you're going to want to notify your board president and the superintendent, because the first rule of effective governance and good boardsmanship, no surprises, right? And that's an important piece to remember. And again, you know, you are the court of last resort, so you would not get involved in any complaint or concern until all administrative levels have been exhausted and someone has gone through all of those appropriate channels, at which time then it could come to the board. But it would not come to the board until had gone through all of those channels. And you need to make sure that if you're hearing about something like that, you make your administration aware of it. Okay? You never want someone to be surprised. The superintendent should not surprise the board, but the board should not surprise the superintendent either. Okay? So in 2021, here were some of the decisions that they reached. A board member at a public meeting threatened the coach's job and had done so in the previous year as well. Do you think that's a violation? Yes? Okay. It was. Failure to support school personnel and the proper performance of their duties. This individual was suspended from the board of education for three months. It was so clear that he did not even contest it. It was just an automatic, whoosh, and he was gone for three months. A board member voted to approve the superintendent's merit calls. The member's daughter was a tenured teacher in the district at the time the member participated in the vote. It's not a violation? It is a violation. Okay? You have to make all your educational decisions in the educational welfare of all children, but additionally, you cannot take any action that could be perceived as benefiting or providing an unwarranted benefit to a member of your family. And so if you have a family member employed in the school district in any capacity, you are generally conflicted out of participating in discussions around employment. are generally conflicted out of participating in discussions around employment, salary, contracts, benefits, disciplinary measures, any of those pieces. Okay? And when I sat on the board, it had to be a direct line between the person's employment and the superintendent. Okay? Now it's any employee in the district. So it doesn't matter if they drive a bus, if they teach AP, or if they're a principal, you're out if it's a family member. Okay? They've also expanded the meaning of family member beyond an immediate family member, which was what it was when I was a board member, which would have been my husband or my children. Right? Now it includes, and we'll talk about it in a few minutes, a whole host of family members beyond your immediate family. A board member voted to approve use of the district facilities to an organization from which he derived income. It's a problem. Okay? It's the same thing. You have to avoid direct or indirect financial involvement that might reasonably be expected to impair objectivity or independence. And I will tell you that in that particular instance, he was getting a stipend as a deacon of the church that wanted to use the facilities. That was a non, I mean, it wasn't even a direct, do you know what I'm saying, payment that he was getting from this organization that wanted to use the facilities. But they found that it was problematic, because he did receive funding from them. A board member distributed flyers urging voters to vote for a particular political party, indicating the complaintant was a leader of a radical group who was going to take over the town government. The board member used his title as a board member, and it had no disclaimer, saying that he was speaking for himself as an individual citizen and not a member of the board. Huge problem. Okay? Again, you know, you can't make personal promises or take any private action that might compromise the board. Without that disclaimer, it could appear that the full board was endorsing these political candidates. That would also create an unwanted advantage for these candidates who are running, who would appear were being endorsed by the full Board of Education, because there was no disclaimer, just his name, and then his, you know, Board of Education member in X town. Okay? They censured him. Okay? A board member wrote an op-ed, again, endorsing a candidate for the Board of Education. In this instance, he included a disclaimer. The op-ed included multiple references to his position on the board and a discussion of the board and comments on board matters. It was a problem, but this is important, because in this instance, this is the first time that the School Ethics Commission has gone beyond saying you have to include a disclaimer, but indicating that the content of the endorsement, because he discussed in detail other board matters, belied the waiver, so that it would appear and be perceived potentially as member of the public, that while he was saying he was writing as an individual, everything that he included went beyond what would be reasonable in an endorsement of a candidate for the office, another school board seat. And so they found that he was guilty and reprimanded him. A board member on his personal Facebook page made anti-Muslim, racist, incendiary, and offensive comments. Okay? Again, taking private action that would compromise the board. And this board member fortunately resigned after being called on by the governor and various other leaders of various communities to resign for his outlandish information, all of which was on social media, and I will talk about social media in a couple of minutes, because that seems to be spending, consuming a great deal of time for the Ethics Commission. And they are very concerned about board member usage of social media. Okay? So this is the recommended disclaimer, that if you wanted to write an op-ed, or you wanted to put a post up on Facebook, or on another social media site, you would be required to have. That you're speaking in your capacity as a private citizen, not as a board member, that they're not representative of the board or its individual members, and solely represent your own personal opinions. That is the language that every board member should use if you're going to endorse someone or if you're going to post something. You need to use that kind of disclaimer. Now, here's, you know, this is why it's important, because they've noted that even if you have the disclaimer, if the substance of the post or statement can nevertheless render the disclaimer meaningless, it's useless. Right? It's the substance of your writing, not the disclaimer itself, that will dictate whether the school official has rendered a disclaimer meaningless. Now, that sounds good, but that's pretty mushy. From my perspective, I like to be able to tell you in black and white, here's what you can do, here's what you can't do. So here's my best advice to you always, if you remember nothing else that I have said tonight, always err on the side of caution. If you think it can be a problem, it may be a problem. Don't do it. Okay? Really, just be careful, because, you know, over the years, and I've been, I was a board member for 10, and I, this is my 18th year, that's 28 years of doing this work. I have seen the School Ethics Commission shift at times in what they have said is a problem and what they have said is not a problem. And so you just need to be cautious, and I think you can never err on the side of caution enough, which is not to say that I don't, that I think that it's not important to have a voice, but I think you just need to be careful in the words you choose and the tone you take. Okay? They went on to say, again, in 2020, that public words which derogate from the mission of a Board of Education serve no purpose, create unnecessary hostility and animosity within the community, and ultimately have the greatest detrimental impact on the very people that the respondent is tasked to serve, the students. And I love that. They acknowledge the sanctity of the First Amendment, but words that deliberately cause divisiveness have no place in the educational setting. And I think that that's really important. You can agree to disagree, always, especially at the board table, but always do so amiably. Debate an issue, not each other. Okay? You don't want to be divisive. Okay? So, you know, it doesn't matter the medium in which your opinion is expressed. You know, when I was on a Board of Education, social media was not big, and these same rules applied to print. So if you were going to write a letter to the editor endorsing candidates, which is something you can do, you had to follow these very same rules. Indicate that you're speaking solely for yourself, that it is not the board, that they're your public, you know, your personal opinions and your perspective. Make sure that your speech meets the requirement of the School Ethics Act and the Code of Ethics. And again, even if it technically meets it, ask yourself whether it would deliberately cause divisiveness or derogate from the mission of the Board of Education, which is to focus around the kids. And I think that that's a good test. No one's trying to remove anyone's First Amendment rights, but again, you're now publicly elected officials. As board members, you have an obligation to the district that is different than when you weren't a board member. Okay? The Board of Resolution to approve the hiring of an audit firm that you work for, can you participate in that vote? Absolutely categorically not. Okay? Because of conflicts of interest. You must recuse yourself immediately if there is a benefit to you as a school official or your immediate family or an other. Okay? That other can be a friend, it can be a neighbor, it can be anyone. So anytime you have a business interest in something that you would gain financially from, recuse yourself. Gifts favored, offered with the intent to influence, no discussion, don't vote on it, don't take it. Any kind of personal involvement that creates a benefit to you personally that is greater than the benefit would be to any other member of the public. Oftentimes, I'm asked if, as a parent, you're going to vote on a fourth-grade field trip, and can I vote on that, because I have a fourth grader? The answer is yes, because your fourth grader is not getting a benefit that is any greater than any other fourth grader in the whole school district. It's only if your child would derive a benefit that is greater than, or you would derive a benefit that is greater than another member of the public would. So. Service or employment that may prejudice your independent judgment. If you worked for the food service provider, let's say, in the school district, you might want to recuse yourself, because it may be perceived, because again, let's go back to the beginning, the perception that there's a conflict of interest, or a perception that there is a violation of the public trust. They may believe that if you vote to rehire your food contractor, you know, food vendor that supplies cafeteria, that there's a benefit to you long-term as an employee, so you may want to recuse yourself. Keep in mind, it's not just whether you can be objective or not, it's about the public's perception as well as the reality. So again, it never hurts to err on the side of caution. Okay? Who qualifies as a relative? And here's the expanded definition. Okay? Spouse, civil union, domestic partner, parent, stepparent, child, stepchild, son and daughters-in-law, siblings, stepbrothers, half-brothers, half-sisters, parents, stepparents, grandparents, grandkids, aunts, uncles, nieces, and nephews. You know, when I sat on the board, it was just my family. Right? Not my husband's family. Now, it's not only yours, but all of your relatives, whether it's by, you know, civil union, marriage, or domestic partner. Everyone gets included in that. So again, you have to look at those conflict of interest provisions using this definition of a relative before making the judgment. So if you think you might have a conflict, the person to best check with is always your board attorney. Okay? He or she is the final arbiter of that, so that you're clear whether you have a conflict or not. Your board attorney is the best person to check with. Okay? The district has an opening for an LDTC, a learning disabilities teacher consultant. It would be a perfect job for your nephew, who just lives a few towns away. Can the district hire your nephew? Nieces and nephews are out. The board is meaning to discuss the superintendent's performance evaluation. Your district, your daughter is a substitute in the district. Can you participate? No, you cannot. Okay? Regardless of someone's position in the district, if it's a family member under this broad definition, okay? Even if it's part-time substitute, and they substitute in your district, you're out. They substitute in Hunter and Central, they're fine. You can participate. So, but not if they have a job in any capacity, and it doesn't matter if they're part-time or full-time. If it's a coach, a full-time, you know, teacher, a lunch aide, playground aide, it doesn't matter. You're conflicted out. You can't participate in looking for a new superintendent, in negotiating the contract, terms and conditions of employment. It's all prohibited. Jim?
So if the nephew applies for the job and you recuse yourself from the discussion, is...
Superintendent cannot recommend him because of the nepotism piece, the nepotism law. That's why, because he can't be recommended. Sean? Oh, okay. You can't hire a relative of a board member or the chief school administrator. Maybe exceptions. Here's the exception. If in the district you can't find anyone that is qualified for that position, that is more qualified than someone already in the district, with the permission of your executive county superintendent, you could, then the superintendent would be authorized to promote them to a different position, but they better be an AP physics slash Mandarin-Chinese teacher. Okay? That's not going to work for an elementary school teacher or a Spanish teacher. Do you know what I'm saying? Because you can find qualified personnel that are not family members, unless it's an extraordinarily unusual circumstance for which there is no one else to employ them. Okay? So that's a really important piece for you to remember. That exception is so little that it's almost silly. If you already have a relative that works in the district before you became a board member, you can't take part in any discussion around their employment or the terms and conditions of your employment. They are grandfathered, because they were here before you took your seat as a board member, but you can't participate in anything having to do with their employment. Okay? And again, you can't take part in the search, selection, or vote to hire a new CSA. Any kind of evaluations post-hire and contract discussions are precluded. Okay? The board is voting to approve the memorandum of agreement with your local education association. You are a teacher in another district. Can you participate in that vote? You, the board member, are a teacher in another school district, it's the same statewide union, association, forgive me, NJEA. Can you vote on the memorandum of agreement?
This is the final. It was decided before it's the monoteam. Then yes.
Okay. And you're correct. Okay? If all of the memorandum of agreement, all the salary guides, the total compensation is there, yes, you can still vote on it. You can't participate in the negotiations, but you can, however, participate in voting it. We've included, and this is in your packet, it's a handy-dandy little handout, again, that you can go back and look at to see whether you're eligible to or not. That's absent another conflict. So if you're a teacher in another district, but you have heightened union involvement, which means you're either an officer of your association in the district where you work, you are a building rep in the, you know, in the building in which you teach, or you're on the negotiating team for your district where you work, that's considered heightened union activity and would be a secondary conflict that would take you out of participation altogether. So again, always check with your board attorney, if you happen to be an educator, because they've held that even if you, it's a similar statewide association like AFT. Some districts have American Federation of Teachers, some have AFL-CIO as their bargaining units. If it's a similar statewide union, these same conditions would apply. It's not just NEA or NJEA. That is the magic piece here. Okay? Again, other possible conflicts, you're not in the unit, but in terms of employment is linked to the unit. Sometimes you have non-aligned employees, but their salaries are in some way tied to the negotiations of the bargaining unit. That could be a conflict if you had a family member there. If they're supervised, your family member, by other employees in the unit, that could be a problem. And again, there's the family member heightened union involvement. Okay? This is a change from when I was a board member, and it changed not too long ago, like two years ago. It used to be that if you received the endorsement of your local education association when you ran for office as a board member, you were conflicted out of participating in negotiations for one year after you were elected, and then you could participate, absent any other conflicts. Right? You're just, you have no family members in the district, but the association endorsed you for election. They have now since decided that it doesn't create a per se future conflict, meaning you're not conflicted out for that year, unless their endorsement is given and intended to influence the member. What board member is ever going to say they took it because they were going to be influenced? I mean, it's sort of silly, but this was what they wrote. And that's what I meant by, we've seen shifts over time. When I was a board member, you could not negotiate for a solid year after you were elected if they endorsed you. So it's a change. Okay? The doctrine of necessity. I have some boards of ed, not here, not you, where all of their, so many of their members are conflicted, that they don't have a majority that can vote on either hiring and/or approving a contract, in which case you could invoke the doctrine of necessity, in which case everybody comes back in. You read it aloud at a board meeting, it outlines who's conflicted, what their conflict is, it gets posted, and then, once that happens, you may all then vote on that, because you would not be able to necessarily, I have a board where they couldn't even have a nine-member board, they couldn't get three members to negotiate a contract with the association because they had so many members that were conflicted. I had a board once that they only had two members who could look for a superintendent for the school district. Everybody else was conflicted out. So they had to invoke the doctrine of necessity in order to be able to move forward with those tasks that boards of education are required to complete. Okay? We've also seen recently, and this is an important one, because I have found the Board of Education members typically are also volunteers in their school districts on a rather regular basis. So you are allowed to participate in volunteer in the districts, including holding an executive position with the PTA, PTO, or homeschool association, but you cannot be involved on an ongoing basis with students or staff to the degree where the board member has authority to give or receive directions to or from students and/or staff. Sometimes we see board members who are so enmeshed in their buildings that the staff think nothing about giving direction to or taking direction from a Board of Education think nothing about giving direction to or taking direction from a board of education member. That's not the appropriate role for a board of education member. Also, board of education members should not be involved in volunteer activities where you're handling funds as well. So it has to do with the amount of student contact time and staff contact time. Certainly, one-day, one-shot kinds of activities, you chaperone a field trip, you come in to help with Read Across America, if that's something where you read books to the kids one day once a year. Those kinds of things are always okay, but again, it should not be where you're enmeshed in the school. So no volunteer coaching if you're a board of education member, which was a problem for some folks. No being the club advisor as a board of education member where you're meeting weekly with the kids and with a staff member. Those things are prohibited to board members. Again, this is different than when I was on the board of education. Board of education members could do and did do all of those things, but they have subsequently decided that that's a problem, okay? So here are some questions you can ask yourself when you're thinking about volunteering. Will I be giving directions to it? I'm not going to read all of these, but you know, if you can answer yes to any of those questions, then you ought to get clarification from your board attorney. Now, just because you can't volunteer as a coach in the school district has nothing to do with your Park and Recs, or the Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts, Pop Warner, any of those other organizations. You can volunteer to your heart's content. They're not tied to the school district. As long as they have its own bylaws and bank accounts, you're welcome to do that to your heart's content. No one's trying to, it just has to do with the schools, all right? But talk to your superintendent and request input from the school's attorney, okay? Board members often ask if they can participate, and this is part of the reason that things are limited for board members in the area of personnel. Board members generally are not involved in the hiring or interviewing of candidates for positions, except they have said for high-level administrative positions that with the permission of the superintendent, up to two board members may observe interviews, let's say, for example, a high school principal for the business administrator. But it has to be with the permission of the superintendent. And in fact, they then issued a second one to say, "Board member involvement interviews for positions other than soup is not encouraged." So again, this is something that is relatively a recent change, and again, the exceptions in narrow circumstances subject to the approval. You are not permitted to conduct exit interviews. So that used to make sense until they changed the first part of this. So now they're saying you can, but you can't, you know, coming in you can, but going out you can't. Sometimes they're inconsistent, and this is one of those areas where there is not as consistent. So we do recommend that you develop a list of your members and administrators who may have a conflict, and make sure that that's kept up to date because it can change. Again, consulting with your board attorney and identifying those possible conflicts or questions that you do have is often helpful. Again, you know, checking at school board notes to keep abreast of recent advisories is very helpful, just to keep you up to date and in the loop. In the left-hand side of your packet, there is an acknowledgement form for the ethics training tonight, but you just must always be cognizant of your responsibility to protect the public trust, to honor the obligation to serve the interest of the public and the board, and to periodically, you know, reevaluate those potential conflicts, okay? So there are links here for all the advisory opinions that we talked about, and then once we talked about this evening. And so this packet is a wonderfully good reference for you to hang on to, especially if you're a new board member. My card is in the packet. I spend my days talking to board of education members. If you ever have questions or concerns, you just need information, you are always welcome to call me or email me. I will always return your call or return an email from a board of education member. It is confidential. I don't, you know, if Jim calls and asks me a question, I then don't call up Mr. Suozho and say, "You'll never guess what. Jim asked me this, this, and this." Your questions are held confidential with me. It's very helpful, I think, especially for new folks to know that there's always someone they can call and ask a question. Sometimes new folks think they should know the answer to something, and they don't. They don't want to ask a colleague on the board because they should know and they don't know. That's what we're here for. If you have a question that I don't have the answer for, I can get you in touch with someone in our association that does have the answer. We have a labor relations department, we have a legal department, we have a policy department. So we are here to assist you as you move forward with your district. So thank you for your kind time and attention. As always, it's a pleasure to see all of you that I know and that are also new. Welcome. I really mean it when I say I love my board service, I would do it again in a heartbeat. I love what I do. I get to work with board members who are some of the best people I have ever met in my whole life, who are centered around what's good for kids, because there's nothing more important to our futures. And so I thank you very much, and I look forward to being of assistance to you in the future if I can.
Thank you, Glenn.
Thank you, Glenn.
All right, we're going to move back to, let's see, the election results. So we have three new faces tonight. The first is Sean Ellis, elected to a one-year term with 1,375 votes from Naperville. The next is Brian Keyes, who was elected to a three-year term with 1,183 votes. And Sean Lewis, also elected to a three-year term with 1,009 votes. And then Tracy Petrucci from West Anwell was elected, re-elected to a three-year term with 798 votes. So now we are going to read the oath of office for the newly-elected board members. You guys would come up to the podium and read this?
Kind of make a little...
We want to do a Tracy.
Yes, you can do it.
Just turn her knee to the ground.
We're going to do everybody at the same time.
Yeah, we can bring the officers over.
As Andrew, you can probably read that out.
So I'll read, and then if you just repeat after me, please. I, your name, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I, Sean Lewis, do solemnly swear and affirm that I support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution. And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
All good, Andrew?
I'm sorry. Do we want to start over? I'm sorry. All right. I apologize. We're all going to read together.
You need to do like eight or you guys.
Yeah, you were supposed to trace.
I can, I can, okay, I can hear you guys, right? I just want to make sure that that's the way I want to talk about it.
I got a little closer to Tracy, so open that up.
Well, that's perfect, yeah.
I, your name, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
I, Sean Lewis, do solemnly swear or affirm that I support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people.
I, your name, do solemnly swear or affirm that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of a member of the Board of Education.
I, Sean Lewis, do solemnly swear or affirm that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of a member of the Board of Education.
And that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to New Jersey Revised Statute 1941.
And that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to New Jersey Revised Statute 1941.
Nor disqualified due conviction or crime or offense listed in New Jersey Statute 18A12.
Nor disqualified due to a conviction or crime or offense listed in New Jersey Statute 18A121.
And that I will faithfully and impartially and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability.
And that I will faithfully and impartially and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability.
Thank you. Sean Ellis.
Present.
Jim Gallagher.
Here.
Brian Keyes.
Here.
Kevin Kowalski.
Here.
Sean Lewis.
Here.
Tracy Petrucci.
Here.
Diana Purcell.
Here.
Ronnie Todd Marino.
Here.
Megan Warner.
Here.
All right, on to election of president. I will call for nominations for the office of board president. No second is necessary. At the close of nominations, I will take a roll call vote for each member, asking you to state your selection for board president. If there is only one nomination, I will conduct a voice vote of ayes, nays, and abstentions. Once a president has been selected, I will step down as temporary chair of this meeting and pass the gavel to the newly-elected president, who will then conduct the election for the office of vice president in the same manner. Now, the first will need a motion to open nominations for president.
Second.
Thank you, Jim. All right, any nominations?
I would like to nominate Kevin Kowalski as president.
I'll second that.
Are there any other?
I'd like to nominate Ronnie Todd Marino.
All right, any other nominations? All right, so I would like to make, I need a motion to close nominations for president. Second by...
Second.
All right, so we're going to do a roll call vote. When I say your name, please say the candidate that you're voting for. Sean Ellis.
Ronnie Todd Marino.
Jim Gallagher.
Mr. Kowalski.
Brian Keyes.
Kevin Kowalski.
Kevin Kowalski?
Yes.
No, I'm sorry, he's next also. Kevin Kowalski.
Kevin Kowalski.
Sean Lewis.
Kevin Kowalski.
Tracy Petrucci.
Kevin Kowalski.
Diana Purcell.
Kevin Kowalski.
Ronnie Todd Marino.
Kevin Kowalski.
And Megan Warner.
Kevin Kowalski.
All right, I just need a motion to appoint Kevin Kowalski as president.
Second.
All right, motion passes P1. Now we'll hand the gavel over to Kevin.
Yep. Andrew, back to those three. I will call nominations for the awesome board of vice president. No second is necessary. At the close of nominations, the board secretary will take a roll call vote of each member asking you to state your selection for board vice president. If there is only one nomination, the board secretary will conduct a voice vote of ayes, nays, or abstentions.
Abstentions.
Abstentions. I knew I was going to mess that one up.
Motion to open the nominations for vice president?
I'll second.
I'll make a motion to nominate Ronnie Todd Marino as vice president. Any other nominations?
Move to close the nomination.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
All right. Congratulations.
We just need a motion to open my head as vice president.
Second.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? On the four reorganization actions, we need a motion to approve items A through C.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
All right, brings us to the public comment section. We only have one tonight, due as a special meeting. Just a reminder, before we start public comment, we have procedures and requirements that include standards of conduct that need to be followed by members of the public during public comment. If a member of the public becomes disruptive during a public meeting, including during any period for public comment, the member of the board charged with running the public meeting shall warn a disruptive member of the public that continued disruption may result in being prevented from speaking during a public meeting or removed from the public meeting. Disruptive conduct includes sustained inappropriate behavior, such as, but not necessarily limited to, shouting, interruption, the use of fanatics or comments seen as abusive, obscene, or defamation. Members of the public are invited to address the board on any matter for a maximum of three minutes during this portion of the meeting. You are asked to state your name and municipality. Public comment is now open, if anybody would like to say anything? All right.
And we don't have any...
No, no, no Google forms, correct?
Nope.
All right, I will now close public comment, and we will move to executive session.
Make a motion, you want to executive session? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
No action taken.
Excuse yourself, right?
Yeah. Big guy.
I still worry that she could fall.
Go back to Mexico. Go back to Mexico. Hang out in Mexico.
Sure she's not waiting.
Not a bad deal. Not at all.
All right. I need a motion to re-enter open session.
So.
Second. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Any abstain? We need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Same.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Any abstain? A lovely C and three course.